Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our committee, the whole meeting of December third, twenty twenty four. Meeting number twenty four, we're going to clean up. And we have an amendment to the agenda. Uh, number four, which was a delegation of, uh, oh, sorry.
This is my name.
No, I have questions.
Shucks, I guess it's, uh, just as is. So there are no amendments, I apologize for being incorrect. I can have a motion to adopt, or I guess.
I'm making a motion to adopt the agenda as, as posted.
A second here.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Kirkett, thank you. All favor. Next, we have to documents make motion to the, uh, the regular minutes, uh, November nineteenth, twenty twenty fours meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Give me a minute, sorry, what was that, Thomas?
I need a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of November nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to adopt that, minutes from last meeting, I'll start in motion.
Um, all in favor?
No questions.
Oh, sorry, any questions, uh, rising from the minutes?
None from me.
Okay, all in favor? Um, next, we have the open payables in the amount of sixty five thousand eight hundred and two dollars fifteen cents.
I'm making a motion to clear the open payment.
Instead of notes. We've got, Captain, please, Counselor, okay, any questions regarding the payables? Yes, except anyone?
Your, your worship, maybe just for the record, um, you'll see multiple checks made over to the same people. And that is due to printer malfunction, it was printing on both sides of the checks. And so recently, those checks have been printed and voided, and then were issued again.
Okay, great. And steam pro resources.
And those are water, our, our groundwater monitoring and water testing.
I mean, now there's no, when you're going to be playing big figures. All in favor? Question about all in favor?
Sorry, just getting related. There, um, yeah, all in favor.
Okay, carried. Um, next on the agenda, number four, we have the response to Watson Lake Ski Club. Now, this is a discussion topic and ready to bring forward a few important, uh, from, uh, Chris Urban, and ready to bring forward a few important considerations regarding the maintenance and upkeep of his ski chalet. Which plays a vital role in our community's outdoor recreation experience, annual floor waxing and cleaning, regular maintenance of the chalet's floor, and will ensure durability and welcoming. Space for users, weather stripping for doors, deck marking and snow removal, fireplace maintenance. Um, the fireplace maintenance is integral to the evidence and company of the chalet, and assuming its function will maintain. Should be a top priority to preserve the environment by house here in the space we're biased. Um, I'm sure Counselor, um, C O Lockwood could confirm that, uh, our current fireplace is not.
Yes, your worship, um, and actually, Mr. Urban was on council and actually made that report, was the fact that we had, uh, inspection done of the chimneys and the liner of the fireplace, and both are cracked and have been condemned, and the only way to fix them is to redo the old chimney. So it's a massive capital project. And being we're looking at doing a retrofit of the ski chalet come down the road, it's on our priorities that we're working on. Um, and the administration's view is that we hold off on spending money on the fireplace, which could be included into that retrofit, and that does take place. We are looking at options, they've, we've been exploring everything from fire, like electric in, uh, inserts that give the the fake fireplace, uh, ambiance, but, um, for now, and the ski club has been told that the our places have been condemned and no fires can go in there or water our insurance. And then there are other issues, your worship, that they asked about was the snow removal on the deck, on the decks, they're asking, uh, that council consider buying a snow blower to clear the snow off the deck, because they say it could be damaged by shoveling. Um, I'm under the viewpoint that probably snow blower would make more damage to the deck than we have the roof. Um, and we are currently working on weather stripping for the doors, and we had been told, um, that the floors are supposed to be waxed every three years is something, and so we will do an admin report to council. If that addresses each of the, um, issues, and then you guys can, uh, provide a letter back to the ski club.
Thank you.
If that will be.
The, so the, the, the make, um, then, so they did the roof on the ski chalet, the last year, correct?
Uh, yes, we did the roof, um, in twenty twenty three. And then twenty twenty four, uh, we redid the decks, all the railings, and restained the whole exterior of the building, plus changed some windows.
Okay, um, I know something to consider. Uh, I guess we'll have to see what, what the, the cost of being to either renovate it so you could have a natural fire in there versus um, ripping out the existing fireplace and putting in like an electric with that.
Or there's, there is also the option of propane, like moving forward.
And there's, there's propane out there for the grill already in the kitchen, it's already plugged in, so that's enough, that's a third option.
And then the other thing they mentioned in, uh, in their letter here was, um, uh, rural station, um, we are currently working with, uh, work and, they have exterminators, they actually hired them, they're actually upbeat stations and, and drops also through the building, and it's been in fact since this fall. So it has made a significant difference in the way.
Well, any upgrades this spring, or this summer that you guys done, they're all up to court, right?
That is correct, they were inspected by a micro building inspector. So your worship, the council wants, administration will provide you with, um, a mid-document, so you guys can write.
I think that would be, uh, pertinent in this situation. Um, something that addresses each one of these points, and maybe if there's something else that administration feels that that maybe was overlooked in this order that they had in mind, um, could also be included. So.
We will, we will bring that back to you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that too, thank you, this gives a little bit more context.
And then we need any sort of, moving on.
Yeah.
Um, next, we have all nations outreach, Indigenous Survivors Day, and this was sent to us, uh, actually, we sent to Mayor Hatcher about the possibility of establishing an Indigenous Survivors Day on June thirtieth. As a day to reflect Watson Lake's commitment to inclusive, inclusivity, empathy and healing. So the observance adopted by cities such as Surrey, Prince George honors Indigenous resilience and heritage by acknowledging the lasting impacts of clothing policies. Including sixty scoop, millennium scoop, birth alerts and other practices that have disrupted Indigenous families and communities. Indigenous Survivors Day provides Watson Lake an opportunity to honor and courage, honor the courage and strength of Indigenous survivors who have endured. Historical traumas and ongoing challenges by designated June thirtieth as Indigenous Survivors Day. Watson Lake can take an important step in raising awareness, promoting healing and fostering education and dialogue that deepens understanding and appreciates the Indigenous resilience and cultural heritage. Adopting Indigenous Survivors Day would demonstrate Watson Lake's dedication to reconciliation and inclusivity. This proclamation would signify the city's solidarity with Indigenous communities and its commitment to justice, equity, equality and respect. And you've reached our consideration, look forward to positive response and the opportunity to collaborate on this meaningful initiative. And as Troy and Remitus, all these nations of outreach. Um, but.
What are they asking for, please?
Um, kind of like what we have on March Day on September thirtieth. They're just looking for a different, they won't know they want proclamation. So proclamation, um, Councilman, it's like there's some days, I think they went a little bit further than a proclamation, because they have things here where it says, whereas the Watson Lake recognizes just, uh, whereas the town of Watson Lake recognizes the injustices endured by Indigenous peoples through clothing policies, including sixty scoop, millennium scoop, birth alerts and practices that disrupted families and communities, whereas Indigenous Survivors Day on June thirtieth provide an opportunity to honor the resilient strength and heritage of Indigenous communities who endured family separation and systemic discrimination. Whereas the day creates a platform for healing, education and dialogue, raising awareness of Indigenous challenges and resilience. Therefore, we resolve that by establishing Indigenous Survivors Day on June thirtieth, the town of Watson Lake confirms its commitment to honoring Indigenous survivors, promoting healing and fostering an inclusive community. So versatile plots on it, or we, we already do that on September thirtieth, and we also have June twenty first, which is a national holiday.
I'm just wondering, would it be expected as a community or is the town to be put upon events, or is it just a symbolic?
Isn't that average rule date? Average rule date is June twenty first. Whereas Truth and Reconciliation Day is September thirtieth, which, which does all the things um, that they're asking for, I mean, it doesn't, they don't outright say the sixty scoop and letting scoop. But that's what those two days are designated for, and I kind of feel the third day, it's, it's Indigenous Day is different than September thirtieth. And I feel like September thirtieth is kind of like what they're asking for June thirtieth. And it's kind of like having like two Christmases.
Cause not every.
A year, I, I, I mean, that's a poor comparison, um, because one's happy one, isn't it, um?
Your worship, based on what the request is, it would just be a proclamation, like there wouldn't be any official events.
Celebration.
No celebrations, no, no memorials, no nothing, it would just be the mayor writing a pop proclamation stating that they recognize June thirty fifth in Watson Lake as this day, but, um.
Does Elephant, does Elephant have a proclamation?
No, no idea, this just came down to the president, her worship.
I know that not every province, um, it's a, not like a holiday for them in the, or in September, which one is that one?
Uh, that's truth and reconciliation.
Truth and reconciliation, not everybody. It's not a holiday for everybody, so.
So they're just asking us to recognize it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, it's.
They got, they got a sound recognition, they have.
Four, um, the June thirty of day.
They have, we have actual events, um, around truth reconciliation on September thirtieth, and as well as Indigenous Day.
Correct, that is correct.
Confirmation, I'm okay with, but.
Just to recognize it, I mean.
Could, actually, you know, this might be a, an excellent opportunity to um, invite Elephant to co-proclaim.
Well, that's a really good idea.
Co-proclaim with us?
Yeah, and then it would, and then, and I think that would be great, because then it would be culturally like acceptable for them, what we're actually um, writing in our proclamation, I think it would be a great idea.
Would be interested in, um, asking, uh, the town heard.
She was.
Yes.
Or council, I mean. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so we do advise our staff that we should write a letter to Elephant, asking for a co-proclamation, I think. Uh, is, is that an idea that we want to pursue? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll need a motion.
A motion, okay, so all in favor? Okay, man. All right. Okay, uh, I need, I got one more, I got a, uh, first from Counselor, uh, pocket, in a second for that motion. Counselor.
Thank you.
And then all in favor of this carry.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, um. Actually, Carter's sitting on the chair. Just nerves, really. Um, next, we have an administration report regarding the janitorial contract award recommendation, um, if you have any chance to read it. We can make a long decision on this at the December, I think it's seventeen. December seventeenth meeting. Um, any questions about the background discussion or recommendation? Did Counselor?
Right.
You're, you're okay with, uh, reading it, and you're, you can make a decision to reach out and ask him?
You don't have any questions.
Okay.
No.
Um, moving along, we have new capital budgets.
We're just going back to the soon.
Oh, sure.
Is this a wording this, is that, we're.
No. The, the wording of it?
The wording.
Oh, we're, no, we're not wording, not till the next meeting, this is like creating always a chance to hash out any details for things that were like we thought were glaringly missing from.
Here, okay, sure.
Okay. Um, the next one is again, same, same kind of deal, it's the capital budget, budget amendment by law. And this is to increase the twenty twenty four capital budget in the amount of, uh, two hundred and fifty one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and some of the overages were the unfortunate excavator motor blow up at the landfill. Um, the command, the fire command truck. There was, uh, let me, it's my seven year worship. Yeah, oh, it's all, it's all there. Um, some of it comes from our own funds, some of it comes from guest tax funding, some of it is from the auction funds. I don't know. Different things like the boiler and operating systems, the lowest bid came in at sixty thousand dollars above our estimated price, and it's something that we need to do, and in order to make that happen, we need to pass a bylaw which allows us to spend more than we had allocated in our capital budget, um, last fall.
And your worship for the record, um, these were items that were approved through motion by council during the last years, last city. And so this is just to formalize the, the changes that council had approved through the year.
What would be the correct answer on that, in, in case council said, that this current council says absolutely not? We're not spending more than will be allocated, it would just be shut dead, or would it be carried forward to the, along here?
Um, yeah, it would be, well, the fact that council had actually approved it, they're approved. Although it wasn't on the thing, so it's a technicality, I'd have to go through municipal services that are current community affairs to sort that one out, being they were approved expenses.
Got you. We were pretty close, that was a five million dollar capital budget, so it will be out by a little bit.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, there's some things in there that were not, um, like the motor on the excavator wasn't planned. You know, that was a little yips. Oh, um, with this, what we do, can we get a high limit or high high heat shut off switch?
There's one, there's one issue in it, uh.
Oh, we have to say, uh, yeah. May I learn our lesson?
It's been, well, originally it was, it was supposed to have been installed when the first motor was put in, but due to the issues with the contractor, and it wasn't something that we were legally able to chase. Um, so the new one, uh, brand has installed it and tested it, so.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, yeah. All right, um. Do they have any other questions about various items within the capital rich or in the revenue?
So, the, um, the council already passed. Um, so I'm looking at, uh, sure. Uh, so there was an extra sixty on top of what was already, or are we having to are we as the new council having to look at that and decide if we're going to increase it? Because that's already been.
They, they were already approved by pre-responsible, yeah. What you're doing is approving the, the comprehensive document of compas council's approvals. Every year in December, you will see amendment to the capital budget come forward to council for stuff that's transpired through the year that councils approved based on tender processes, so we put stuff out for tender, and we've been given estimates based on consultants and engineers that say it should cost X number of dollars, but it comes in at Y. And then council has the, the option of either accepting it, declining it, and if they accept it, it's over, then we have to account for it at the end of the year. That's what this is.
Well.
Um, I'll make an amendment of the twenty twenty four capital budget on Watson Lake.
Uh, no, this is. Yeah, so you have two weeks to kind of ponder, if you go over it and there's something in there that you find that's a glaring mistake, or you have a, a burning question about it, you have time to.
Thank you.
To consider it. So. That note, the animal control by law. Um, do we, or do we not want to look into adopting, or not adopting, updating, uh, our current animal control by law in zero seven zero nine? So I understand that that is from the seventh month of two thousand and nine.
That's from two thousand and seven, your worship.
Okay.
It was by law zero nine of two thousand and seven, so we're, you know, we're almost, uh, almost twenty years of the.
So the new, um, controls that Y T G, or the new, uh, the Animal Protection Act. From what I understand, the, some of the big changes was conservation officers or bylaw officers could, could walk into someone, say someone had, um, malnourished horses. Or they knew that there was some sort of animal abuse taking place, they gave them the legal berth all to walk, to enter the premises to address.
If, if they were, if by, uh, for conservation and our C P officers, bylaw officers would have to be appointed under the new act, if we wanted, wanted to allow our bylaw officers to fall under that authority.
Okay, other than that, were there any significant changes that would have?
Yeah, there's, there's.
Possibly different.
Yeah, there is a lot of changes actually in the new act, hence the reason that administration's recommending that council look at the bylaw. So we're not in con, con, conflict, confliction with the new act.
So when you say we would have to appoint bylaw officers to do that, it couldn't just, it wouldn't just be our current bylaw officer that.
No, for, um, I think where the council's later was going, was under the territory to regulate justice, we can only enforce municipal.
Okay.
Right, but they're, under the new territorial act, we can allow our bylaw officer to be appointed under their act as well. But then, then you, it's sort of that, that double edged sword, because then there they don't need it to do anything in municipal boundaries, but then that'll makes it so we're enforcing stuff outside of jurisdiction as well. Um, there's lots of the, the territorial regulation that hasn't been published yet.
Say that again, because that could have given implications for us, because currently we don't deal with too well at all, like that's off limits.
Well, we haven't been, even though it's in municipal boundaries, over a, a political issue there.
Yeah.
So, um, so I, the reason we put it forward is we want council to compare what we have to what the new territorial act is. Because we don't want to have something in our act that conflicts with the territorial, right? Because then it puts us at odds, um, so, um, there will be, uh, if council wants to look at it, then we will uh, come forward with, uh, recommendations to council to look at.
Okay.
And this would come back to council on, uh, the seventeenth of December for first reading, so we can open it up to public and public feedback as well.
When do we have to get through budgets of like, is this, I mean, is this pressing? Could we wait till we get up to budgets and then?
Well, we could, we could do first reading, and then that opens the timeframe, it could be two or three months down the road. Um, that gives time, because we're gonna have to do public consultation and a whole bunch of things on this. And it's not gonna be something that, what we, you guys can first reading, we bring it back in January, and we're pushing through for the end of January. No, this is something we want to bring forward now, so we can get it opened up to the public, and then that way it gives us still springtime even to.
Got you, I was just thinking about, um, our two random faces here, and getting it heat wet and not drowning.
Yeah, and that's why we're, we're like a fish.
But it also took us a long time when we think about the, the bird, the wild animal by law, that would take a very long time, and this one is, is, you know, dogs and cats is a sensitive subject, right, so, you know, this one, I think we'll think of it a time, and we would certainly want public feedback.
Well, to be able to open it up to the public and say, okay, give us your thoughts.
Yeah.
Um, is a step in the right direction, as if you wanna overwhelm anybody.
No, we're, we're purposely working on things, so it, because people come up, time to come up to speed.
I have a dog and two, uh, what's the issue?
Oh, there is.
There's been issues with the town enforcing our bylaws on First Nation, uh, residents.
And in one case, a long time ago, there was a problem dog down there. Our bylaw went down there to deal with said dog, got the wrong dog. Dispose of, dispose of the dog. Wrong dog.
Yeah, but we don't really dispose of the dog.
This is back in the day, where it's not used to, but I mean, that's kind of the.
They got the same issue, like, there's a, just recently, when Elephant put out that there's behavior or door lube in dogs. The town's been trying for a long time to get that here for us. Maybe there's an opportunity that you kind of work together, that maybe.
How's it been, is that in the laws?
Working with the Art First Nation on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been in contact with them, and, uh, the issue is that they won't allow us to enforce our bylaws in their, in the, on their land. Okay, so, um, so we haven't been taking, we haven't been going through, because then we're, they don't want to abide by the rules. So we've been very clear with the, the, the Art First Nation administration about that.
Yeah.
Hence the reason they were trying to hire their own, um, dog catcher slash bylaw officer, then deal with their issues on their side, now.
Just like that's the only thing between the hell and the love.
I, I think hopefully throughout the.
Like you said.
Yeah, I think really.
Yeah, it's been happening, Elephant posting that they're bringing a vet into town, and the town people getting upset about it. We say we're bringing a vet into town, and they're getting upset about it.
Well, we tried to work together and bring the vet into, we all. Well, yeah, your worship, we tried to bring the vet in last fall, um, and then it's a B C vet. Um, and we were cost sharing with, the plan was to cost share with the Art First Nation and Dayludana. And it would be a vet clinic for five days in the community, traveling vet of northern B C. Um, so the cost of fifteen thousand dollars to bring her up here with her clinic. And then the free fee for service as well, and we come up with page for so much support, and there's some that stuff. Um, unfortunately, she blew the motor in her truck and had to cancel, so we're tentatively booked for this spring again, for her to come up to run a clinic, and that was, that's working with the Art First Nation. This, this one that's been advertised is through the territorial vet, and we weren't surprised of it. And we have correspondents into that office, and, uh, Community Affairs is meeting with them today to try and sort of why the town, giving an option, so there's more to come on that one.
As of the one that's co-sponsored by everybody in spring, of course.
It is available for.
And I'm sure they hope that if the town did, was the main funder, but if, had somebody came in, gross background would receive services. I mean, if you never.
They're gonna get a vet in the White House or something, because.
They've tried for years, and they just seem to, I they're so busy in the White House as it is, that it makes less sense for them to leave their offices.
And so sure, there's too much.
No, and so it's.
Yeah, and just for the record, we've, when we have any event in town, it's. Yeah, and just for the record, we've, when we have any event in town, it's open to everybody. We have never ever, doesn't matter if it's a community dinner or sporting event, it's open to everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so animal control by law, we'll look forward to seeing that come up in the upcoming meeting. Next, we have the housing accelerator fund vacant and underutilized property incentive policy. After reading that, I don't have to kick myself out, because you can't stack or come up with another funding. So therefore, I don't have a pecuniary interest in this, and I can still stay.
We're all very pleased, Mayor.
Hello, Jordan.
Hey, Maria.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, your worship. Um, my name is Jordan, by the way, I know most of you, councillor Wimpin, councillor Pocket. Worked with the uh town on and off for um about ten years or so. And currently managing um doing all the project management for the five initiatives. Um, you have under the housing accelerator fund that is on the go right now. Um, so really, this is just a continuation of uh that work. Um, my understanding is my colleague Graham White presented this to council. I'm not sure if it was at the last meeting or the meeting before that, but basically went over the finer points of the policy um with council. And the reason we put a policy in place uh basically is to be transparent and clear. About what the rules and regulations are around um this different uh this funding program that we're talking about today. Which is converting underutilized vacant properties to uh properties for residential use. Um, those of you who are around at the last uh council, this this policy is basically modeled on the uh. The other grant policy we did, because they're very similar programs, they're just targeting different uh groups. So for the benefit of um councillors that were here in the last go around, we did a a kind of a similar grant policy um. And I think we rolled it out in the spring, summer of this year, two thousand twenty four. And it was around creating new dwelling units in the town of Watson Lake, and we were targeting specifically um carriage homes, multi multi suite units, um that type of thing. And we had really um good success uh compared to our peers. Watson Lake is doing awesome, creating units. Um, and really, this is kind of the next big uh funding program um that we're hoping to roll out. And so uh the direction from uh previous council and probably this council was um. One of the, one of the challenges we had with the 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 previous grant policy was just rolling it it out a bit late in the year. Um, so ideally, we would have liked to have had it ready um to go and kind of been engaging folks who were interested in this in in January. But just with getting the agreement signed and and actually developing the policy and that kind of thing. It ju- it just happened a little bit later than I think we would all preferred. Um, ended up working out okay, but um really like why we're bringing it to you so early in the year, we're at December here. Is we're hoping to get this adopted by council. Um, so for information still at this point, but if everybody's okay with it at the next meeting, we'd love to see it um adopted by council. And I'll touch on the communications plan that we have coming afterwards and kind of answer any of your questions, so. I'm not gonna go through the policy um, other than I want to just read the statement to you guys, because it pretty much covers um, covers the reason. Uh, that we're having this program, and this is all fully funded through the two million dollars that Watson Lake received. Uh, last year or this year through for the housing accelerator grant. So um, the residential conversion grant uh aims to increase the availability of dwelling units. By developing underutilized or vacant or non-residential properties for residential use. Bringing non-conforming properties into compliance with zoning regulations and cleaning up and rehabilitating underutilized. Uh, and vacant properties and supporting affordable and diverse housing solutions. Through the efficient use of existing buildings and infrastructure. The goal of the policy is to provide opportunities for underutilized or vacant or non-residential properties to be redeveloped by residents to increase housing stock. And encourage investments within the town, and that's basically what this policy comes down to. Um, you'll, I meant, like I mentioned, the last one was really around creating like new dwelling units. And this one's not necessarily around creating new dwelling units. It's um looking at what is avail- like what is already existing out in the community. And we want to work with community members that might be holding property or have property that's derelict. Or they that they would like to clean up, and this is a significant amount of funds um towards that. The envelope is um, the funding envelope is four hundred and twenty thousand, I believe. Um, of which a hundred percent of that is, it goes towards grants. So um, I'll kind of just stop there and we, I can get into any specific questions you have. Sorry, you might hear my daughter screaming from upstairs. Um, I can get into any specific questions you have about the policy or um, and then like I say, yeah, we'd just be looking to have that approved hopefully at the next council.
I had one, Jordan, it was in section ten, it was about landscaping. And it was uh whether um, it was like section, here's ten point. You're done. Uh. It's really blurry.
John, what else?
Sorry, I can make it a little bit bigger.
A little further please, maybe it was an eleven. There's one with the. It must be in our section. Um, there was a section that I read today, though, and part of it was yeah, for converting. Let's look at one here. Let me see that.
Oh, here, it may be eight point eleven.
Um.
Yeah, for landscape.
Yeah, something about landscaping and it, because the way it read was. Residential conversion grant can't be used for the renovation of existing unit, I'll give that. Um, nor for landscaping or other improvements not directly related to the creation of a new unit. So what I'm not looking, what I'm looking for there is to kind of clean up the language a little bit, because. I totally agree that the the grant money shouldn't be used to create a uh community beautification or a new lawn. However, I do feel that like if you had to haul in eighty-five loads of gravel to fill in a previous, a lot that was deemed. Unbuildable upon, for lack of proper English. Um, be due to the fact that it had a huge gully in the lot and the cost to to fill it in, to to build something on. I feel that that is different than, but I, but the way it's worded, if you could. Use it for that thing, for that purpose, because it's for the creation of a new unit, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to tidy the language up, so it's something that's like, it's, I understand it, but somebody looking at that might be like, oh.
Yeah.
I don't, it's it's kind of clear, but it isn't.
Worship, I, I think it reads fine, says nor for landscaping or other improvements not directly related related to the creation of the new units. So you you could do all the landscaping you want, but if it's not in relationship to the new unit.
Actually, you know what, I'm, now that you mention that, it does kind of. Really, it is clearer than I thought it was at first, because in my mind, I just saw like. The word landscaping and the creation of a new unit and the nor in there is like a.
Yeah, okay, I think maybe just, your worship, just even giving an example, um. Like, you know, just put in parenthesis, like example given, like, yeah, new lawn or something like that, that might. Might provide just a bit more clarity. And again, like, this is the policy, so I I just want to like acknowledge that it's it's fairly wordy and exact kind of language. So with the communications that we'll be putting out to the community, we hope to kind of simplify this uh. You know, policy into something that's a bit more easily understandable. But yeah, we could, I could definitely take a look at that and and talk to Cam about it.
And your worship, the reason that I really pushed them to tighten up some of these definitions. Was because under the previous one, there was some ambiguity in some of the definitions that could have been taken either way or the other. So I asked them on this policy that we really tighten it up. Um, just to make sure that it's very clear that what we're talking about and what's allowed. And with this one comes actually a chart showing what we're considering for percentages of completion as well. So that way, there's no guesswork. My fifty percent and your fifty percent might be two totally different things, it might be the middle of the glass, not the half top, half bottom. So um, we wanted it very clear moving forward, so we can administer it fairly and equitably across the board.
Are we still going with the fifty percent being pretty much what they consider lockup?
Um, yes, then there's actually, there actually is a C M H C um.
Definition of.
Definition of the check sheet.
Which would be correct with the wrong roof on, windows and doors on.
Siding.
Siding?
Siding on view.
Um, ensure the siding, oh, if it's clad to weather, but it's, the siding could be like. Because some people have that one last piece of siding that doesn't go on ever.
It's not, there is a check sheet.
Yeah, we're just kind of incorporating best practices from the last policy. So I think to C A L Lockwood's um point, like tightening up the languages and being exact as possible is important. Um, just based on some lessons learned from the last one.
I think if you have the roof on and windows in and a door on, it's pretty sure that like the rest of it will happen. Once he gets that permission. You know.
Yeah, that's why we've been using the same H C thing, because it's a standard across the country.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can move on to um, if council has any further questions on this, um, you know, I could move on to. I just wanted to share some of the communications materials um that you'll be seeing uh out in the community and also get your feedback on that. And that's kind of just to introduce the new council members to some of this work that was approved under the last council.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Okay, sorry, it's half second. Okay, everybody can see that?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, um, so there is a, there was a general communications plan, which I think made it into your package. Um, just approved by the last council, and that was so. We um, the project team didn't need to continue coming back to council to um. Get approvals essentially for what uh what communications materials we were gonna put through. Um, the communication strategy that was approved basically like provided um a high level cost estimate. Um, key messages, spokespeople, uh which actually might need to change now that there's a new council. Um, but I thought just because, so Cam would normally just approve um what we have in front of us here. But I thought just bringing it to this council, just so you guys know um or have any feedback about what you might be seeing out in the community. Um, so once the policy is approved, uh we'll, we're targeting early January to start developing um our communications materials. Um, it's our understanding that Watson Lake residents uh are pretty engaged in these funding programs. And are interested to see what's coming out next. Um, and so we want to be proactive in our communications, and we want to be able to fulfill the. Um, the re- uh the results that C M H C is looking for within our housing accelerator funding agreement with them. So we don't have to forfeit any of the two million dollars um for not reaching our targets. Um, this will start in January, um, I will be traveling to the community, um, set a date with Cam. To figure out when is good, I'll be traveling with the community, probably likely with one of my colleagues, I'm not sure quite who yet. Um, and basically what we'll do is we'll host um, we'll host a community meeting to. Just have basic information about the program, and that'll be in the form of pamphlets. Um, and handouts and be there to just talk with people. Um, and as well, we'll be at uh Chris's store during the day. We set up a booth there last time, we plan on doing the same thing and just kind of catching people that are coming into the grocery store. Um, again, we'll have handouts and program information. We'll update the webpage, um, that is currently under the housing tab right now on watsonlake.ca. Um, with more program information and Patrick uh at the town of Watson Lake is a wizard with Q R codes. And we'll be posting those all over social media and um on our printed materials. Uh, we'll develop a fact sheet, so just how many, how many spaces are available? Or or how much funding, I guess, is available for 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 projects and what all the parameters are and that kind of thing.
Can I make a suggestion, Jordan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I can't speak for the rest of council, but I can speak for myself, I hate Q R codes. We have to take out your phone and take a picture or something to read it, just print it. Spend the extra money with printed Q R codes. I know, you, I can take the the temperature of the room, but like, may call me old fashioned, but I hate them. And I'd much rather see something in print.
Thank you, your worship. Um, well, the Q R codes will be printed on the handouts, so it'll just be bonus information to already printed materials that we'll be giving to people. Does that satisfy your?
Two pages and skip that step.
Well, it's it's the, it's actually all the policy as well, so and it also goes on the posters.
I like Thomas, I like paper too.
Well, we'll have both, and and I think just like, so we'll do a mail out to every person, so you'll get a. You'll get a pamphlet in your mailbox, every person in Watson Lake will get that, and then we'll have handouts. Um, well, you know, we just want it to be accessible for for everybody, so even if it's not people that prefer paper, people on social media. Um, that type of thing, but duly noted, you know, um, definitely like pass that information back to our designer um to just to, you know, determine the best path forward for that.
Even just a cheat sheet that has the closed doors version, that isn't like just something, the biggest thing that I would like to see going forward is that. Um, people that might have an interest in building or changing a lot or. Except accessing this fund however which way, have the lead time to get their ducks in a row in order to fulfill. The shortened timeline in which they're, because it it ends December twenty 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 six, right? So we're starting the spring of twenty five, it's really only like, you know, it's not a long time, you know.
Yeah, yeah, they need their building permit pulled by December twenty twenty six.
Yes, so but everything doesn't like, even with the banks, it takes a while to.
Yeah.
To put together a home equity line of credit, or it takes time to get like your ducks in a row for a mortgage, meet with them and track them down, make fund management, strike the labels, find a lawyer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Lands branch, travel lots and like, there's, there's multiple wheels in motion to get something built, right? And the more time you have to do those things, the better. So if you know that something is coming up, this might help you in getting your dream off the ground, the the more lead time, the better. So even if it says like, the town wants to, we'll be able to help you in this regard, like I think you're doing a great job, just. Just gotta get the information out there as fast as we can.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, I I think we're definitely on the same page there and why, and and happy why I'm addressing it in in December. And you know, if council can approve everything, we'll be, we'll be ready to go in like early January and getting this information out. And um definitely appreciate that feedback, and I think that's lesson learned from last time too, is some of the communications we put out were a bit just kind of wordy and jargony. And we definitely just want to be like direct to the point and make it accessible for for people. So um, you'll see that incorporated into this new kind of communications uh package we have coming up for this grant. Um, I'll just finish up really quickly here, we're gonna hit the newsletter as well, uh we do social media. Um, we'll do a press release once funding is awarded, um, I think last time you guys got in the paper. Um, we're picked up by CBC, so that was great. And then C M H C um has their own communications for protocols for the federal government, and we'll handle all that as well to make sure that they're happy. Um, the previous council uh approved forty six thousand dollars for communications and production and designers and all that kind of stuff. So we're just be drawing on that budget, and this was kind of just more for Cam's information. But we're, we're anticipating uh five thousand dollars in in cons- like production costs, just in terms of like writing. we're like production costs, just in terms of like writing, development, trips. Fact sheet, webpage, all that kind of stuff. And then just um a thousand dollars for graphic design. We work with a designer named Ally here in Whitehorse. And she'll just make it all pretty and readable and send it to the printers for us. So six thousand dollars out of that forty six thousand dollar budget and um be looking to get that started kind of right away once the policy is approved and that's all the information I have for you guys.
Uh, thank you for that. I'm. As this is the committee, the whole, we're not making any firm motions tonight. Um, this will be uh passed on to the December seventeenth meeting. But I'm quite sure you could go with what you have or start going in that direction. Because you haven't heard anything different from me tonight? Correct, intense?
Yeah, yeah. So the policy as it's presented tonight, um just with the correct dates and everything in there, that'll be presented at the next uh regular meeting of council. You guys can adopt it there. It's just a motion. Doesn't need a, it's not like a bylaw, so it doesn't need all the readings and stuff. Um, once that's in place, we basically have everything we need to to go um and we'll, we won't be back to council until we have applications done and you know, figure that part out.
Perfect, have a great time.
Okay, awesome. Um, nice meeting, everybody. Thank you for your time and um have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
So on that note, I don't worry to uh getting to the next part of council open forum. Does anyone have any burning questions? Or just? Questions in general?
I'm a little curious. I probably should have asked Jordan. Um, so with the consultant hours will pass, so we've got a webpage, we've got a fact sheet, we've got social media posts. How are these different? And why are they separately charged? Is there not, could he not use some of this?
That that is, that is going out of that full amount. He just did a breakdown on how much for this, doing this one initiative.
Okay.
So that includes their travel coming down, doing the town hall meetings and.
But so basically, because basically social media is gonna have the same information as a fact sheet or or what's on, yeah, what's on the webpage or what's on
Yeah.
um Facebook or.
Yeah, so they're gonna be posting it to each one of them, monitoring all those questions and answers and then coming down and actually meeting with people. And last time on the last initiative, they spent uh two days in the office here with actually making appointments with people, having people go and come in and actually go through each see the eligibility and actually helping them fill in up the issues as well.
Yeah, I was just asking too, if I can do their calling the application actually.
Yep.
Let's see. That.
Yeah, go share them around.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good.
Um, any other questions? That's your bucket?
No, my thing's also on.
That's a one, do you have? Any other? Or any questions?
Um, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I do have another question. Um, with this ski show, hey? Does the town collect the rent year round if somebody wants the building?
No, it's under the M O U and I could provide a copy of the M O U to council. Um, from um October first to six months, March thirty first, April, whatever, math isn't working, right? Um. Any of the rentals in that time period, um ski club gets income from doing the rentals and then the other six month of town, it's all income from rentals.
I don't understand that if the town holds the ski club wire, but why is the ski club collecting like from the building?
Yeah, the the previous council signed an M O U or in agreement with council. It might have been mine, this lost council could have been one before, but it was, so it was in agreement on how work out financial support for the ski club and they maintain the operations of it during the time period.
And previously they had, it was uh what you fourteen, fourteen and a half thousand was the town's contribution. And they swapped that in lieu of something more common, because they didn't know whether or not the price of fuel would skyrocket or water or there's, there's too many variables, so they they said that the town would cover the propane and the heat power. That that was okay, propane heat tower and.
For the entire year?
No, no, no. Well, yeah, for for the.
For the six months that.
Yeah. And we instead and they wouldn't get the fourteen thousand anymore. Right? So. The town pick up the tax for those and and in exchange, so they 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 stripped, they changed the structure of their uh user agreement happened there. Um, we have it somewhere.
Yeah, I I do have it here and I will, I will put it in the council.
Better be handy. Um, C A L, but if you could put that in the council folder. Uh, where's, where did you find it?
What are the understanding? Can we email that?
Yeah.
Last one you do. You know, in town and school.
So we have. Do you want some time to look at that?
I'm gonna maybe read through that and just see what 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 their uh contributions are and what our contributions are.
Any questions? Do you have anyone that's goes people online? I guess who's blues?
Um, just uh if anybody has questions, someone raise their hands please.
Oh, anyone that is online. And is watching uh via Zoom, if you have a question, can you raise your hand so that we can get to you and it's your question or on YouTube or on YouTube, sorry? While we're waiting for that to happen, we'll go to the the gallery here and uh we'll start on the left hand side, mark over this side. Patrick, do you have any questions? That's her. This Wilkinson. And Cardi?
Um. Do the questions have to be on a certain subject or just any question?
They could be, well. Within reason, but like I don't know why they like need to include or not apply them anymore, but like something town related would be nice.
Yeah, so the reason I was asking was because I was wondering, can we go back just a little bit back to what the gentleman was saying in the two million dollars? Um, I saw that said the word residential, but there is a building that's over there in an ice room hotel that's not getting used in any way, shape or form. And I heard that it would only take probably a million bucks to get it into shape. Is that something that would be eligible for this grant money that looks like there's two million bucks that
Yeah, no.
Does anyone know where that's going or?
Just because it's mixed, it has, it has to be a new build and like the object of the housing accelerator fund was to uh help like residential, kind of like not not big commercial projects. Um, it was to help the, to help somebody build uh an in-law suite or a carriage house in the backyard that if there's someone could live. And yes, of course, they could live there too, but it wasn't, it wasn't meant to be, you can only access, even if you could. And it was a new project, the maximum that you could apply for would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars under the the guidelines of the grant. So even if it was a brand new build, the maximum they could apply for would be a hundred and twenty thousand, which would not meet their financial expectations or goals.
I was just thinking about apartments or long term.
I actually play the prices of that.
If it was a home care involving nursing, just elderly causing. Something along those lines, but.
I mean, that's not, not change for sure.
Who actually owns it? It's owned by G M E Fuels. Apparently, I think having spoken with the company, they're not, they're not wishing to perceive the development, perceive with development.
Well, would they be interested in selling it so that it could be?
That's, yeah, that's uh that would be.
Then stand for something to be used by the town in some way, shape or form?
Yeah, the town doesn't deal on housing. Like, we have the housing accelerator fund to help people build houses, but typically like we were just at a a conference dealing with like what in what is council's role within the town? And integrated to basically dogs, ditches and dumps. And um.
Water and sewer.
Water, like those are paramount things and not not to be facetious at all. But the majority of like it's recreation, it's the roads, it's water and sewer, it's you know, there's it it's urban planning to some extent, but it's in the making of lots available, but it's not so much um developing those lots and acting as a landlord. Where where that's, that's not the role of this town or any town. You won't, you won't see the same, the barrel having it's just that, it's just not what we do.
You wouldn't use taxpayers' money to purchase.
No, unless.
Property or.
Thinking of
Yeah.
other folks that were in need of housing. I mean, there's lots of seniors. There's lots of people need apartments, there are no apartments.
And that is the purpose of the housing accelerator fund. It's exactly that for people to build a a four flex or a carriage house or an apartment in their home or another little, you know, cabin on their property. That's the whole point of that, to increase the housing market. So there are more homes for people then to be able to buy or to be able to like rent or whatever that looks like.
Yeah, so I've heard that there are folks that and I may be wrong, please correct me if I am, I sometimes am. Um. I've heard that there are folks that have purchased lots that the permits and the fines, fees and penalties and the red tape are entirely too much for them to take on and they've just given their lots back because it was too much trouble. Is it gonna be that way with the hundred and ten thousand bucks? That they get to build a granny fly with?
No, 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 that you're, that's the maximum that you could apply for if you're building three units. And it's a hundred and twenty to a hundred and ten and it's forty thousand per unit. Um. But uh the 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 red tape that you speak of, I
That's, I, your worship, that that would be, those lots are being purchased from the Yukon government and the requirements for development are Yukon government, not the municipality, because the Yukon government is the property owner. The municipality doesn't own the land or put them off for sale. That's Yukon government. And so then the requirements must meet Canadian uh the Canadian building code. And they have development timelines for each one of those developments. It's laid out when people go and do their purchase agreements on those properties.
So does the money from that grant, does it have to be paid back? Is it a loan or is it just for you?
It's a free.
It's it's free. If there's, as long as you, as you you get seventy five percent and you have fifty percent slowly to your bill, then you get the remaining twenty five percent once you obtain your permit for occupancy. And anyone could have applied for it. Um, I'm sorry if I misunderstood your question. But it is, it's, oh, there there are some things that you can't use for, you can't build, use this grant money to build an Airbnb grant up to tourists in the summer. It has to be for long term housing that creates somewhere to live for somebody in Los.
Thank you for answering.
Um, other than that?
Your worship, you have no questions online?
No questions online? Um. And that's it? I hope anybody, um, with that, that brings up, do you have any new camera items as far as I know? So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Or second, I'm sorry.
Sorry, girl, we need to get her out, just.
We'll get you in a second, we're calling. Oh, sorry, yes, yes. Colleen, you're there, um?
She's there, but she doesn't know you.
We can't hear you do this. Hold on, I'm gonna call in there, let's try to figure it out. If you swipe over, there's a little red button on your screen. If you press that, you should be able to unmute yourself. Swipe. Right to left.
Yeah, good chance, there's nothing, chat.
Well, is there something on it? Well, Colleen, you have my number. You can text me the question. Give me thirty seconds.
I don't know if you guys turned the chat back on, but it's still turned off.
Chat's off.
Yeah.
It should be on now, man.
Yeah, it's working now.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Colleen. Um, I can't read it.
Yeah, hold it. Uh, when will Francis Avenue Extension Lots be available for sale? Was the housing accelerator lottery done in August or September? What was the timeline on these bills to be market ready? Thanks to the equipment operators for all um all, oh, for all, it's not removable. And so your worship, I can answer those questions. So I met with um Lands Branch when we were at Whitehorse for the newly elected uh elected officials training on the weekend and they are trying to schedule meetings in between Community Services Lands Branch and E M R Lands Branch and myself to discuss the sale. But the plan is for those lots to go on sale this winter uh with the parliament for development to start in spring. Uh, was, that was question number one, was the housing accelerator uh lottery draw done in August, in September? What was the timeline on those to be market ready? Well, the timeline is that they have to be online for the end of December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Based on our funding and I leave those answers, both your questions unless you have something else going. Uh, thank you. Perfect.
Um, Mr. Irvin, did you have a question?
No, the, did I miss the, did you guys read the correspondence from the ski hill or did you have discussion about it or have any questions for me?
Uh, we did, uh, administration is going to go through it point by point and provide what can be done, uh, options to council for the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You?
Yeah.
Is there anybody else in the online? Community that has a question for us? Okay. Let's try that again. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilor Pickett. Thank you, Councilor V. All in favor? Gary, thank you, Jerry.